You may begin to.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to a regular meeting of the Newark Zoning Board of Adjustment. Today's date is Thursday, September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five. The purpose of this meeting is to hear requests for variances from the Newark zoning and land use regulations under the authority of the municipal land use law. If you're an applicant for a D or U variance, you should be aware that such a variance can only be granted after showing that special reasons for the grant of the variance exist and that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the zoning plan of the city of Newark. You should also be aware that in order to be granted such a variance, you require an affirmative vote of five members of the seven-member board of adjustment. Other variances require a majority of four votes to grant the variance. If you're an applicant for any variance and your variance is denied by this board, you have a right to appeal to the Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within forty-five days of notice of the decision, and that court may overturn the decision of this board. If you're an objector to any type of variance and the variance is granted, you too may appeal to the Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within forty-five days of the decision of this board. If you do file an appeal, I ask that, we ask, I'm sorry, that you, that in addition to complying with any uh, notice requirements imposed by state statute or court rule, you serve a copy of your pleadings on the zoning board secretary. Zoning Board Secretary, could you raise your hand? Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided by notifying the Star Ledger, the Jersey Journal, the Newark City Clerk, and posting a copy of the agenda on the bulletin board in the basement of Newark City Hall. In addition to adequate notice on the open public meetings, electronic notice of this remote public meeting was placed on the city of Newark's website as permitted by state statute. Members of the public may ask that, may notify the House that you have a question or would like to make a statement by using the raised hand feature at the bottom of your computer screen or your mobile device. We will, of course, advise you when it's time for you to ask questions or make a statement. If you're on the telephone, you can alert us by pressing star nine on your mobile device. We ask that you refrain from using the chat, that if an appeal is taken, we have to provide a copy of the official transcript to the Superior Court. The chat is not part of the official transcript, and we want to make sure that your questions, the answers to your questions and any statements you have are properly recorded and made part of the official transcript. Additionally, when you use the chat, it pops up on the screen. It's, it's, it's just as if you were talking loudly and out loud out of turn if we were meeting in person. So I'd ask you to refrain from using the chat. The meeting of the Board of Adjustment will now come to order. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Member Hall.
Present.
Member Hardisty.
Present.
Member Comesañas.
Present.
Member Jones.
Present.
Member Rivera.
Present.
Member Cobian.
Present.
Member Torres.
Present.
Chair Alphon.
Present. Are there any requests for adjournments or postponements? Request for a German so postponed. I, I, I don't know if I should say I see any raised hands. But I do. Mr. Velozzi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Velozzi, are you here for, to request an adjournment?
I am here on the only applications for tonight. The second one needs to be adjourned.
Um, so are you here on one or both?
I'm here on both, Mr. Chairman. But I need an adjournment only on the second application.
Okay, so um, uh, this is a ZBA dash twenty-five dash twenty-three, is that correct?
That is correct.
Uh, four seventy-nine, four eighty-five, Fifth Street. If there's anyone who is present that has an interest in application ZBA, there's twenty-five, there's twenty-three, four seventy-nine, forty-five, Fifth Street. Would you identify yourself by using the raised hand feature? I'd ask you to do so now, please. I see one raised hand. Let's bring that person in. Screen name. Screen name Shady Elmore, can you turn your video and audio on, please?
Sure, yep.
Hi, your name, sir?
Yeah, my name is Shady Elmore.
Okay, and are you an objector on this case?
No, I'm not an objector, but I've been trying to see the, the, what do you call it? The plans for the project. Like they have provided a website and I tried numerous times, but I was very unsuccessful, you and the plans online.
Let's, we'll try and help you out there, Ms. Mejia. Uh, maybe you can help Mr. Elmore out, and Mr. Velozzi, maybe you can put him in contact with your office. Uh, counsel, your appearance for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, everyone. Nueño Velozzi on behalf of ZBA twenty-five dash twenty-three for the property at four seven nine dash four eight five Fifth Street in Newark. Mr. Chairman, we're seeking an adjournment. Uh, we were advised yesterday that we require two D variances. Uh, while we did notice one D variance and we had noticed the other one as a she, uh, board council advised everyone today that we need to re-notify. Um, I believe Ms. Mejia already has a date for us.
Ms. Mejia, is that true?
Yes. October twenty-third.
How many cases are on that day?
Three.
And this would be four? Excuse me?
Yes.
Do you have to have that date, Mr. Velozzi?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, whatever you'd like to give us, we will say thank you.
I, I, is there another date where we can make this the third case? That's in that same general date range, Ms. Mejia?
The next available date after that is November thirteenth.
Sounds like a winner.
Mr. Velozzi, is that, is that acceptable?
It will have to be.
Well, I, I mean, if you want to take your chances, but in November, uh, it won't be a chance. You can certainly make that date.
It's, Mr. Chairman, either date is fine. November thirteenth makes it easier for everyone, so we don't have to work too late. I'm okay with that.
Okay, um, thank you for that, Ms. Velozzi. Mr. Elmore, our council is asking for, uh, is, because, um, our, our staff reviewed this and found we needed a variance that he wasn't aware of the level. He'll, he'll need some more time, he has to re-notice. If, if the board agrees, they're gonna adjourn this case to November eleventh. Are you in the two-hundred-foot area, Mr. Elmore?
Yes, I am.
Well, then you're gonna get a new notice, but in the meantime, um, um, if you contact Ms. Mejia, and Ms. Mejia, can you tell Mr. Elmore how we can contact you to see the plans?
So ba- basically, uh, uh, everything will be postponed until November, right?
Yes, sir. And you'll be getting a new notice, and Ms. Mejia is gonna put in the chat how to contact her so you can arrange to see the plans.
Very good, thank you so much.
I have a motion to adjourn this matter to November thirteenth.
Motion.
Second.
Paul, second. Right, um, was that Ms. Rivera? Rivera, call the roll, please.
Member Hall.
Yes.
Member Hardisty.
Yes.
Member Comesañas.
Yes.
Member Jones.
Yes.
Member Rivera.
Yes.
Member Cobian.
Yes.
Chair Alphon.
Yes. Um, thank you, counsel. Uh, matter is adjourned to November thirteenth. Mr. Elmore, uh, make sure you get our secretary's contact info so you can arrange to see the plans and, um, look forward to seeing you again on November thirteenth, same time. Thanks for coming out tonight. There's her, um, she just put her email.
Yep, I see it, thank you very much.
Great, have a good evening, colleagues.
You too.
First case, please, thank you.
The time is now six twenty-eight P M. The first item on tonight's agenda is ZBA dash twenty dash fifty-one, located at eleven dash nineteen Herbert Place. Block six hundred seventeen point oh one, lots nine fifty-two, fifty-four, and fifty-five in the North Ward. The applicant is Seventeen Herbert Place LLC. In the R two zone, the applicant proposes construction of a new five-story, twenty-four residential unit building above twenty parking spaces. Mid-rise multifamily dwellings are not permitted in the R two zone. Applicant is seeking a D one use variance, C variances for insufficient side yard setback, exceeding maximum lot coverage, insufficient building for such transparency, insufficient shade trees, and insufficient off-street parking. Site plan approval is required. This application was approved on February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. The applicant is requesting three one-year extensions.
Counsel? Mr. Velozzi, is this your matter?
No, Mr. Chairman, I have the new matter.
Yeah, um, Ms. Mejia, whose matter is this?
Uh, Mr. Thomas Garlic, he's being brought in at the moment.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair.
Um, hi, Mr. Garlic, um, your appearance for the record, please.
Uh, thank you, Chair, members of the board, Thomas Garlic from Murphy Schiller and Wilkes on behalf of the applicant Seventeen Herbert Place LLC.
Um, this is application ZBA dash twenty dash fifty-one, eleven to nineteen Herbert Place. Are there any interested persons in this application? If so, please identify yourself by using the raised hand feature at the bottom of your computer screen. If you're on the phone, please press star nine. I asked you to do so now, please. I see no raised hands, counsel?
Thank you, Chair, I'll just keep it very brief. Um, we were not prior counsel when this application was approved in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, we are working with the applicant, uh, with a potential pilot application and realized that the, uh, the application had not been extended. So we promptly filed an extension request, uh, for the board to carry the approval, uh, the, the three one-year extensions.
Timely filed, Mr. Garlic?
Once we realized it, so I, I understand, and I, I would ask the, the, the board understand that and, uh, seek to retroactively do that, but I, I understand the point. Uh, Chair, it's just, uh, when we got the file, we had realized it.
Understood. Mr. Plata, you have any concerns here?
Um, no, but I guess the, uh, it'll run out retroactive if approved, so I guess they would have, the extensions would require expire February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-six.
We're, we're aware of that, too. Uh, we're, we're doing everything we can to move things along.
Okay.
The only point I'll, I'll make is that we did, you know, we, uh, I guess the applicant obtained those D one use variance, uh, for the mid-rise previously, and with the change of the zoning, that use is actually now permitted in the C one zone, which is where this property is located. So going forward, if we need, uh, changes, at least, uh, the D one use variance may not be involved, but, um, just to maybe give the board some comfort, but we're, we're hoping to move things as fast as possible at this point.
Uh, good luck to you.
Thank you.
So, uh, are there any questions for counsel from the board? Questions on the board for counsel? If none may have a motion, please.
Motion to approve the extension.
Uh, motion, Comesañas, may I have a second?
Second.
Second hall, call the roll, please.
Member Hall.
Yes.
Member Hardisty.
Yes.
Member Comesañas.
Yes.
Member Jones.
Yes.
Member Rivera.
Yes.
Member Cobian.
Yes.
Chair Alphon.
Yes. Uh, hope not to see you on this again, counsel.
As well, yeah. Miss with, thank you.
All right, have a good night, call the first case, please.
The time is now six thirty-three P M. Item on tonight's agenda is ZBA dash twenty-five dash oh eight, located at two sixty-nine dash two seventy-one Elizabeth Avenue, block two thousand seven hundred twenty-six, lot nineteen in the South Ward. The applicant is two seventy-one Elizabeth Ave Auto Group LLC. In the C three zone, the applicant proposes construction of a new auto parts store slash warehouse. Applicant is seeking a D three variance for failing to meet conditional use standards and C variances for insufficient lot size, insufficient side yard, insufficient rear yard, and insufficient ground floor height. Site plan approval is required.
The Board of Adjustment, the following findings of facts, excuse me, with respect to this property. It's located in Newark's Lower Clinton Hill neighborhood on the western side of Elizabeth Avenue between West Petty and West Runyon Streets. The total site area is approximately four thousand seven hundred forty-one square feet. The surrounding land uses consist of commercial, industrial uses, a gas station, and a surface parking lot. This is, uh, counsel, is your whole team in?
I, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, this is application uh, ZBA dash twenty-five dash oh eight, two sixty-nine, two seventy-one Elizabeth Avenue. Uh, if there are, if there's anyone here with an interest in this case, excuse me, please identify yourselves by raising your hand. You can do this by using the raised hand feature at the bottom of your screen, or if you're on the telephone, press star nine. I ask that you do so now. I see no raised hands. Counsel, your appearance for the record, please.
Once again, good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, everyone. Nueño Velozzi on ZBA twenty-five dash zero eight for the premises at two sixty-nine dash two seventy-one Elizabeth Avenue. Um, if we can have Mr. Fernandez sworn in as my first witness.
Ms. Fernandez, raise your hand, please. Do you swear affirm the testimony about the void be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
We state your name, your address, and relationship to this application.
Jorge Fernandez, F E R N A N D E S, Reged Architect, business address seventy-five Parkhurst Street, North New Jersey.
Uh, Ms. Fernandez, is your architectural license, uh, in the state of New Jersey currently in full force and effect?
Uh, yes, it is.
Mr. Fernandez, well-known to this board, will accept him as an expert in the field of architecture, counsel?
Uh, Mr. Fernandez, did you review the reports with this application?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um, and you have no issues with the water?
Uh, no.
Okay. And Mrs. Hazel's, uh, comments, you'll cover when you go through your presentation, correct?
Correct.
Okay, if you could take us into your presentation?
And right before you do that, Mr. Fernandez, you referred to the word, you said you're, you, you, you have no problems with the water, is that what you said?
Correct.
That's a great thing to say these days in Newark. Most of us have no problems with the water. Um, there, I have a memo from the Department of Water and Sewer dated June third, two thousand and twenty-five, with, um, um, concerns about the plans, label one to three. Request for the applicants to submit, um, uh, various submittals, number one, A to D, number two, A to C, and number three, A, um, A, uh, and under there, subsections I through triple I, and four. And then finally, um, a request that the applicant must make for a hydrant flow test. Do you, as a condition of approval, does your applicant agree to, uh, comply with all those requests?
Yes.
Uh, as a condition of approval, correct, Ms. Fernandez?
Correct.
And, and, uh, Mr. Jamali? As a, uh, I'd like to impose a condition on the water department. If, it, it, it would be really nice if you guys would just sequentially number everything, uh, you know, one through, you know, make it a little bit easier on an old man, could you do that, Mr. Jamali?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll let the others know. I have previously.
Yeah, I know. Good, good goatee look there.
Thank you.
Mr. Uh, Counsel Velozzi, I also have a memo from the Department of Engineering. Is Mr. Fernandez gonna address that or someone else?
Mr. Fernandez is gonna address that as well.
Mr. Fernandez, I have a memo from the Department of Engineering. Even though the engineers don't like to have architects weigh in on this, I'm gonna ask if you've had a chance to review it with counsel and your applicant.
Uh, yes, I have.
This is a, um, seven-page memo with items one through eleven, each with subparts thereunder. As a condition of approval, do you agree to comply with every condition imposed therein on behalf of your applicant?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Uh, Mr. Fernandez, if you could take us through your presentation?
Okay, so we can start with the, with the current site. Uh, the current site is, uh, four thousand seven hundred forty-one square feet. It's currently developed with a one-story masonry building, uh, fronting on Elizabeth Avenue. Uh, the remainder of the site is effectively asphalt, uh, parking area. Uh, but I believe the building is currently vacant, it's not being utilized. Uh, what we're proposing to, to do here is create a, uh, building on our property that will be a, uh, store slash warehouse for auto parts. Uh, we're looking to use more or less the footprint of that existing building in the front and, uh, go back ninety feet and be able to have a, uh, also a loading and unloading garage area for the, uh, for the warehouse over here, uh, which is eighteen feet step back from the front elevation. And, uh, on the front, we will have a, uh, entrance into the, uh, commercial, uh, aspect of this warehouse where there'll be a counter and, uh, obviously, uh, goods for sale, uh, auto parts. Um, what my client does is he, he, he has a, already a store here in Newark, and, uh, he, unfortunately, he's, the store, I believe, uh, the building he's in is gonna be sold, and he has to move. So he's trying to bring his business onto this area here, uh, on Elizabeth Avenue, and, uh, what he described to me, his business is, is, uh, selling auto parts, effectively wholesale, to predominantly taxi cab companies who come in and get the parts that they need and leave. So it's not really a traditional auto parts type store, like an Autozone, where people might come in here for batteries or, uh, uh, cleaning products for the car. It's more geared towards a wholesale to taxi cab companies, uh, which are, already have their, uh, uh, products that they're used to buying in bulk, and they come in and, uh, and pick up and leave. Uh, the, uh, loading will be done with, uh, with the van, with the single axle van. Uh, whatever material's gonna be coming in will be delivered with the van, and also whatever material's going out, it will be also with either a van or pickup truck, a smaller vehicle, there will be no tractor trailers backing into this, uh, uh, building, uh, for, for either deliveries or pickups. Uh, that's the, uh, the program that was given to me when I conceived the, uh, the building. So, uh, we, we're gonna have a ten-foot rear yard setback. Uh, in the rear, we'll have, uh, grass, and on the side of the building, we'll also have, uh, grass as that, uh, the, the remainder in the front, we'll have a asphalt driveway. And we'll definitely plant some trees in the rear yard, uh, on-site trees, and also a sidewalk tree, which will, uh, comply with the requirements of the arborist uh, and the, uh, also the Department of Engineering or water department with whatever, uh, I, I see some, there were some utility boxes and, uh, manholes here that we'll have to clear, but we'll, we'll surely find a place where we can plant a, uh, shade tree, uh, in front of this building. Uh, the floor plan of the building is on page A one. Again, we have here the front, where we have the, uh, the main entry doors, and we'll have a gr- uh, glass front storefront with a counter area. And if, for the, uh, for the sales, uh, there's a bathroom, and then in the rear is all merchandise, uh, shelving, where merchandise can be, will be stored. And, uh, when it comes in, and then obviously, as it goes out, uh, they, the employees will, will be, be doing most of the, uh, of the movement of the, of the material. Uh, the, the second floor is very small, is effectively just a mezzanine for a a more private office area for, for the owner and, and, uh, break area, uh, for the, uh, for the employees. So, uh, effectively, this building is twenty-four feet in height, uh, and the, really, the most of the rear is a double height, uh, for, for storage. So, uh, these are the elevations, again, we tried to bring, we understand that this is in a C three zone, and it's in a commercial zone, and we wanna make it look more like a, uh, a commercial building and less like a warehouse. So we, we're, we're bringing, uh, some glass, uh, uh, into, into the front to be able to comply with the, uh, glazing requirements of the ordinance. And, uh, we also left some, uh, glazing on the right elevation, as we have a setback there, and, uh, that will allow light to come into the store, into the warehouse in the back. And, uh, also some windows in the rear, because we do have that ten-foot setback. Uh, on the left side, we, we don't have, uh, a setback, so we can, we can't have glass, so that wall is, is, will not have windows. Uh, the, I saw comments from the planner about the, the rear yard, asking about the rear yard. I believe that twenty feet is required in this zone. Uh, we opted to keep it at ten feet, because there is no residential building abutting this property, this abuts another commercial property. Uh, and we felt that, uh, the owner effectively needed more storage space, and also, uh, but we still have the, uh, grass area in the back that can be, uh, used to plant trees, uh, and, uh, not, uh, encourage so much into the, uh, impervious coverage of this site. Uh, that pretty much uh, resumes the plans. I can share a rendering, which I believe was submitted, uh, with the package, uh, showing you again the, uh, the entrance to the store, here, the glass and the, uh, the entry doors, and then we have windows on the second floor, and we have masonry on the ground floor, and then we have the aluminum clad, uh, on the, uh, on the second floor.
Mr. Fernandez, uh, Mr. Hazel asks how, um, this project fits the definition of a warehouse in any way. Um, can you explain a little more in detail the type of products? Why shelving only, but it does fit it?
Uh, yes, uh, and I, I've toured the, uh, the, the facility that he currently has, and he has auto parts, and the, they're usually come in small boxes or in, for instance, motor oils that come in also boxes that if he just stores in these shelving. And, uh, whenever the, uh, clients come in with their van, they And whenever the clients come in with their van, they take what they need and it gets loaded into the van and goes away. It's a warehouse because it's mostly storing the product before the clients come to get it. It's more, in that way, I believe it's more like a warehouse, less like a commercial store where people go get one or two items at a time.
Right. And the client also distributes, he'll grab whatever, twenty sets of brakes or somewhat and take it to the local taxi company, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Mr. Chairman, I do not have any other questions for Mr. Fernandez.
Mr. Hazel, could you state your name and title for the record, please?
Yes, Gerard Hazel, Board Planner.
Mr. Hazel, are you going to be asking questions or giving opinion testimony also?
Probably asking questions for this and we'll see where it goes.
Okay, please.
Just my main question is, can someone walk off the street right now? Let's say like I needed some part. Could I walk into that store and just purchase it?
Absolutely. There will sell to the general public. However, and I've been to the store here and it's not really a place where you want to go shop in the sense that it's not set up for people to just come off the street and go looking on the shelves what they need to get. It's more, you go to the counter, you tell them, I need this part, and then they go get it for you.
Which is basically if I were going to AutoZone or so, which is pretty much the way it would be as well, which is definitely considered a retail store. My concern is that I understand from your description what the applicant's, you know, how, as he describes his business, is folks coming in getting. And I, in my opinion, I still see that as being a retail store. I definitely don't look at this as being a warehouse in the in the general understanding of what a warehouse is. I don't feel as though there is excessive or significant storage capability within the facility. And the one thing
Could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please.
Yeah, so that's my concern, that you know, that it does not fit that. I understand that it's not your traditional retail model, but you know, I have a hard time fitting it into the warehousing model, especially as it's provided in the ordinance. In that case, and it's strange because, you know, you would think that someone would want to not be considered because they're such an onerous and trying to meet all the requirements of a warehouse. But I know the applicant is insisting that they are, but I just have a hard time seeing it through that lens and meeting all the requirements, the conditional requirements for a warehouse. This property would not meet it at all.
Mr. Hazel, what's the practical effect if this is seen as a retail store?
Well, seeing that generally, there is no
A warehouse.
Well, generally, the retail use is not permitted as well. So, but in my mind, I see this as being more of a D-one to permit the retail use where it's not permitted in R-three, rather than to try and fit this into the D-three warehouse mold. I think the warehouse mold, there's a lot more required for that in terms of the the building itself and aspects like a green roof and things of that sort. Whereas I think, I really think this is a form of retail, retail sales. I still, I haven't heard anything that takes me away from that opinion.
So other than a change in notice, is it your position that this application, for lack of a better word, would be less onerous, if you will, if it was seen as a retail store?
Yes.
Then as a warehouse?
Yes.
The only thing we have then is notice.
Right. I think the applicant was advised about the question from the report. I think they may, I'm not sure if they have, but I know they were told that maybe you should get the notice for the D-one as well. I don't know if they've actually done that or not.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. In our notice, we require, we noticed for both a D-one variance approval for use as well as a D-three variance approval for failing to meet conditional use standards. So we did notice for both, Mr. Chairman.
That's great. Are there, Mr. Trafficante?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Trafficante, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to provide? Would be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but truth.
I do.
Please state your name and title for the record.
My name is Charles Trafficante. I'm a principal engineer and a professional engineer. I'm an employment of the City of Newark Department of Engineering. My license is active and in good standing with the State Board.
Mr. Trafficante.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez, in the Department of Engineers' report to the zoning board day of July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, we asked for a couple items regarding testimony. All right, I think your survey, you do have a demolition plan for this project, right?
Yes.
Okay. So are you planning to keep anything of the old building or are you just tearing it all down?
We'll tear it down and build a new foundation.
And do you plan to reuse any of the old utility lines or are that all going to be new as well?
Yeah, I believe they'll have to all be new, yes.
Okay, all right, all right. We asked under page two in the engineering department's report to the zoning board day of July sixteenth, under item four, existing conditions, demolition plan, we asked that for a revised demolition plan, show the removal of the existing concrete wall along the south property line in the subject lot. I think it's shown on your survey. All right. And all underground utility lines within the right-of-way that provide service to the existing building that is to be demolished. Now that we know for certain, it's all to be removed.
Correct.
They agreed to all these conditions.
All right, but we also asked, all right, the comment further reads, okay, should the existing concrete wall on the south side of your property line be intended to remain in place where and as it is, applicants shall provide testimony to the board stating so and shall provide additional testimony to the board as to how they intend to dig and construct the foundation footing for the new building along the south property line without undermining, disturbing the foundation to these existing concrete walls within the adjoining lot, twenty-one point oh one, block two seven two six, located to the south. Can you answer that, Mr. Fernandez?
Yes, the concrete wall to the south seems like it's effectively half in our property and half in the neighboring property.
Who does it belong to?
Yeah, I don't know if Mr. Fernandez is trying to answer that question. Do you know who gets it to that question, Mr. Fernandez?
I am trying, I believe it belongs to the neighbor. I think it's it's in, mostly on twenty-one point oh one and our foundation will be able to clear that, the wall. And being that we don't have a basement, I think we should be fine underpinning the wall if need be.
As a recommendation to the board as a condition of approval, would your client be willing to submit, once he hires a site contractor, a statement of excavation prepared by licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey outlining the means and methods how you plan to dig for the foundations for your new building without undermining or disturbing the adjoining retaining wall that is to remain, right? Provide that's to remain, right?
Certainly.
Okay, then last question. Page three of the report.
I guess that's an engineering imposed condition.
Recommendation, yes, an engineering condition recommended to the board, so. And then on page three, next item, under item four, Roman numeral two, applicants shall provide testimony to the board to the existence of any monitoring wells within the subject lot site. Do you know if there's any monitoring wells within this subject lot?
I don't believe so. They are not noted on this site plan.
How about on the survey?
On the survey, they are not noted on the survey.
Okay, all right, so as far as you know, there's none exists for the
Correct.
All right. All right then. Okay, oh, and last question. It's not noted, but since this is going to be a retail store or warehouse, is there a loading zone proposed as part of this site? And do you have dimensions? Are you going to need relief for an onsite loading zone?
We have the, in front of the building at eighteen feet in depth by effectively nineteen feet west, we have an area where that could be used as a loading zone.
All right, well, that doesn't meet the length, right? A standard loading zone according to city ordinance, I think it's either thirty or forty foot, like ten foot wide but at least twelve foot high. Height's not an issue if it's outside. As far as length goes, I don't know about the width, but the length does not meet the minimum. So you would be asking for relief for that?
Yes.
Okay, and how about the driveway width?
Driveway width could be kept at ten feet.
Ten feet, I think for commercial doesn't have to be twelve? One-way?
Yeah, correct.
So either you make it twelve foot or you're going to need relief for that as well. It's up to you.
Noted.
All right, all right, for the record. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're muted, Chair.
Thank you. As a result, Mr. Trafficante is asking for a condition. Is that correct, Mr. Trafficante? What was that condition?
The recommendation to the board was, as a condition of approval, the applicant submit a statement of excavation prepared by a licensed land, a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey outlining the means and methods of excavation for the foundation for the new building, showing how they will not undermine or disturb the retaining wall that is to remain that serves the adjoining property to the south.
Counsel, is that agreeable to you as a condition of approval?
That's agreeable, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fernandez, will you be requesting a waiver of the twelve-foot driveway? Or will you be giving us a twelve-foot driveway?
We'll be able to provide the twelve-foot driveway.
Fantastic. That's everything, right, Mr. Trafficante?
Well, the other issue was the dimensions of the loading zone. I think they're going to need relief for the size of the loading zone.
Mr. Fernandez, is that correct?
That is correct.
Could you, once again, just state what specific relief you're requesting?
We're requesting relief for the depth of the loading zone. We're providing only eighteen feet.
And what's required?
Believe thirty feet, as Mr. Trafficante is
We're going to find out. We'll look here. There we go. Okay, for commercial use, except in the C-three zone, length is supposed to be thirty feet, width is supposed to be ten, height, vertical clearance is twelve. So if it's commercial use in the C-three zone, it has to be forty-five feet long by twelve foot wide by fourteen foot high. So this is deemed a commercial use and it's in the C-three zone. If it's not in the C-three zone, it's got to be thirty foot long. If it's in the C-three zone, it's got to be forty-five foot long. And you said you're going to make the driveway twelve foot wide, which is what's required in the C-three zone, but I don't know exactly what zone they're in, but it's got to be at least thirty foot, possibly forty-five feet long according to section forty-one colon eight dash six dash one, table eight dash one of the Newark zoning land use regulation.
Thank you. Mr. Trafficante, do you have any objection to what the applicant is proposing?
No, just as long as they don't obstruct the sidewalk in a public right-of-way. They maintain that free and clear to pedestrian foot traffic.
Mr. Hazel, do you have any objection to what applicant is proposing?
No, I don't. I know that the applicant indicated the limited size of vehicles that would be loading and unloading.
Mr. Fernandez, can you tell us what you're going to limit the size of these vehicles to?
Yes, the limit would be a van, which is effectively between sixteen to seventeen feet in length.
That's going to be used in this driveway, correct?
Yes.
And as a condition of approval for this waiver, do you agree to limit deliveries using this driveway to vehicles of the van size you just mentioned?
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, you agree on behalf of your client to all those?
We do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for, are there questions from the board finally for the architect? Questions for the architect from the board? Mr. Fernandez, there are, I didn't see any signage on this building.
We do not have a design for a sign yet. Whatever we'll provide will comply with the requirements of the zoning.
Any other questions from the board for the architect? Are there questions from the public for the architect? If any members of the public have a question for the architect, please identify yourselves by raising your hand. I ask you to do so now. I see no raised hands. Is that a raised hands, Miss May? I thought you were raising your hand, Miss May. Was that a raised hand?
No, it is not.
Counsel?
Mr. Chairman, if we can have Mr. McDonough sworn in.
Mr. McDonough, always the last. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, give us your address and relationship to this application, please.
My name is John McDonough. My address is one oh one Gibraltar Drive, Parsippany, New Jersey, and I'm the project planner.
Ms. McDonough, is your license in the state of New Jersey in full force and effect?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. McDonough is well-known to this board. We'll accept him as an expert in the field of planning. Counsel?
Now, Mr. McDonough, there are some questions with the planner's report as to whether this is really a D-one or a D-three. If you could please take us through both types of variances and why you believe this project would be okay with either one or both.
Sure thing. I think it's been resolved certainly by the board planner that this is a D-one and I think that it's actually a case where the pivot from a D-three to a D-one actually lessens the relief that the applicant is seeking in terms of the quantity of relief, because there were a number of conditional use deviations that the applicant would have sought relief from if this were treated as a conditional use. Either way, whether it's regarded as a D-one wholly not permitted use or a D-three permitted conditional use from a pure physical planning standpoint, I think this site readily accommodates the use that's before the board. And, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to just share screen to show how from a physical standpoint, we're looking at a site that's a good fit with the surrounding neighborhood. And shall I have this marked?
No, because I'm sure you submitted it, right?
I did not, Mr. Chairman. I did not. And A-one will be two sheets. One is a top-down aerial with the tax parcel map shown. It's a satellite image. And the first thing that jumps out is we've outlined the subject property in yellow. It is a very small piece of property in the
Maybe larger, please. Thank you.
Okay, so it is a very small lot in the context of the neighborhood. You can see that there are many much larger parcels in the area and that are substantially developed with many auto-centric type uses, so a auto-related service use here, retail use, commercial use is a good fit with the surrounding land use context and certainly from a physical planning standpoint, we have some good compatibility happening here. This is a zone that does allow for a wide variety of uses, but given the extremely small size of the property, there's perhaps limited capacity for other uses that may be permitted here. Uh for other uses that may be permitted here. Um given the surrounding land use context. We think uh contextually, this is a a site that's particularly suited for the use. Likewise, we look at the physical characteristic of the property, which has this developed building that Mister Fernandez talked about. Uh the access that uh Mister Trafficante and Mister Fernandez were just speaking about. Um readily able to accommodate those smaller vehicles, which I think is a is a good reasonable. Restriction or condition on the use that the the board certainly has the authority to impose. Um what's nice about this application is it is adaptive reuse of taking a developed piece of property that had. Obviously has been used for commercial purposes. Repurposing it, revitalizing it and and bringing back, bringing it back to productive use. Um in terms of the statutory positive criteria. I see the advancement here of purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare with a commercial use that is compatible. With the character of the neighborhood and the auto-centric uses around it. Um also, planning goal uh purpose M or efficient use of land. Adaptive reuse is as efficient as it gets from a planning standpoint. And then certainly purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment. Taking the building that's there now, uh you saw Mister Fernandez is rendering how this is going to substantially improve. The visual quality and the uh visual environment with this upgrade and a nice positive investment in the site. In terms of the negative criteria, whether it's D three or D one, I believe that relief can be granted without any substantially adverse impacts. To the public or without substantial impairment to the zone plan. This is a very small site. It is certainly not going to alter the character of the area. It's not going to detract from the area. Um and will certainly add value and quality to both the site and the surrounding land use context as well. Um with that said, we would offer that this is a a good application from a planning standpoint. Uh whether the board treats it as a D one wholly prohibited use. Or a D three uh application where we have several conditions here that are not met. Um if this were treated as a warehouse, there would be a whole series of. Green building elements that would be required on the roof, such as a a green roof. Um given the extremely small scale of this project. I think there would be a a basis for that relief as well. Uh typically, we would want to see those elements on a much bigger structure. Um here, it's such a small structure, we think the relief under D three would be warranted. So again, whether the board finds D one or D three. I believe the criteria are met. The the positives here will substantially outweigh any negatives. Um Mister Chairman, that's all I have on direct.
Thank you. Um are there any questions from the board for the Mister McDonough, the planner? Questions for the planner, Mister McDonough? I think his fee for D one is significantly higher than a D three.
It it just doubled.
Uh so. Are there any questions from the members of the public for the planner? If so, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your computer screen or mobile device if you're in front. Press star nine. I ask you to do that now. Counsel, it's my understanding that um the. Um zoning officer made a redetermination here also. That this was not a D three but a D one. Am I correct there?
Yeah, uh well, that's what we're being, we're understanding, Mister Chairman, yes.
Well, good, that makes this a. A a doable. Decision that has a D one, I think. If there are no questions, I see no raised hands, counsel.
Mister Chairman, that concludes our testimony.
Um counsel, thank you. Are you submitting?
Mister Chairman, I am.
Thank you. Uh, we're now in discussion. We have discussion from the board. And and I would just note um that um. I think it's important to for us to know that the zoning officer did make a redetermination. As I've been advised, I haven't seen it, but I've been advised. That her original determination was D three, but it was revised to D one. And that allows us to consider this as a D one. Uh would you agree with that analysis, Cap, Mister Plata?
I would, but it'd be nice to see a amended uh. You know, determination.
Uh, do you have that, Mister Hazel?
I I do not have that, but I.
Counsel?
Excuse me?
Can you give that to counsel, please?
I will get it to counsel, but there is correspondence where the zoning officer does indicate that a D one is is required, yes.
And and you have personal knowledge that.
I do have a copy of the correspondence, yes.
Thank you. Is that acceptable to you, Mister Plata?
Uh, yeah, I've no. I think we can move forward and we'll, I guess we'll find out.
Uh, that's as big of a yes as you'll get from any competent lawyer uh. So we're now, we're now in discussion um. And uh as Mister Plata says grudgingly as a D one. Are there, is there any discussion from the board?
Mister Chair?
Uh Commissioner Hall.
Now that we've. Believe it's a D one. Uh it makes it easier, but I don't see any negatives. It's a nice looking structure. It almost looks better than. Any retail store that I know of, but uh if you could go in and order something. And so be it. Uh it actually dresses up. Uh as it stands right now, so I'm gonna be.
Thank you, uh. Are there any other comments from the board? Other comments from the board? Commissioner Rivera?
Uh, I'd like to follow up on that too. And uh it's hard to make a warehouse out of a small lot too. So. They're working with what they have. And in general, I like the application for that location. I will be in favor of this application.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Other comments from the board? If none, may I have a motion, please? Commissioner Rivera?
Muting, I'm muting myself here. Uh, motion to approve. Z B A dash. Get myself some glasses already. This is two six nine dash two seventy-one Elizabeth Avenue. Uh there weren't any conditions, correct?
Yes, there were.
There were. With conditions.
With conditions?
Yes.
Yes, uh. Uh motion Rivera, may I have a second? Second, Commissioner Jones, call the roll, please.
Member Hall.
Yes.
Member Hardisty.
Yes.
Member Comesana.
Yes.
Member Jones.
Yes.
Member Rivera.
Yes.
Member Cobian.
Yes.
Sheriff Fun.
Yes, um counsel, I'm gonna ask if you'll um. Agree to a conditional preliminary, conditional final site plan approval. Those conditions will be that you um present to board staff and city staff. Um showing that you've met all the conditions imposed here today. Is that acceptable to you?
That's acceptable, Mister Chairman.
Yes, you can always come back if you can't work that out. Um especially with that wall that Mister Trafficante is very concerned about. Um, may I have a motion for preliminary? Conditional preliminary, conditional final cycle and approval.
Motion.
Motion Hall, may I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jones, call the roll, please.
Member Hall.
Yes.
Member Hardisty.
Yes.
Member Comesana.
Yes.
Member Jones.
Yes.
Member Rivera.
Yes.
Member Cobian.
Yes.
Sheriff Fun.
Yes, congratulations, your application. And preliminary conditional and preliminary final cycle and approval have been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you. Um counsel, Plata, do we have resolutions to memorialize?
Uh we do not.
Uh how are we doing on resolutions? How far behind are we, do you know?
I think July. Um. But. I think we, I think the next meeting's in two weeks, we should be caught up.
Great, good to hear. Um, Miss Mahia. Uh it was your night, Miss Mahia. Do you have any minutes that have to be memorialized?
Not at this time.
Um, okay. Uh, Miss Mahia is, uh did raise a concern with me. She was. Kind of lost and not knowing what to do with. Getting off so early on Thursday night, so if any of you have any ideas. For how Miss Mahia can spend the rest of her Thursday nights, uh let her know. Um counsel, are there any matters for which we have to convene into executive session?
Uh, no.
Um, I will just share one thing with the board and this I. Maybe this was shared and I just forgot about. But. I was told that um. There's a new chief of staff for the Department of Economic Development. Um is that, is that correct, Miss Mahia?
Yes.
Excuse me?
Yes.
And and who is, who is that chief of staff?
Uh, Miss Juma.
Miss Juma, yeah, Miss Juma, I'm told is the new chief of staff for the Department of Economic Development. Did she? Did she tell us that? No, right? I kind of found out by accident, so um. If you get a chance. Uh drop her a line. For those. Uh of you who have been here a minute. Uh I think Jerry has. Miss Juma came as. Uh my hair was, I think, mostly dark then. And she came as a secretary who knew nothing. And I mean nothing about zoning. And we were in the thick of the uh so-called rediscovery when. Our town was rediscovered. She was thrown into the deep end of the pool and um. Um so. She's moved on to become the chief of staff. Deserve it.
Yep.
Um, let's bring Norma in.
So all her late nights have paid off.
Yeah.
Words of encouragement for Miss Mahia.
Yep.
Work till eleven P M. at night, if you just. Just stay the course.
Yeah, we'll add a few more cases on for her.
The only bad thing is I think that the planning world is is has a loss, because I think uh. Uh Miss Juma would have made an excellent plan.
Well, maybe we could still. Uh, screen name Norma, can you turn your video and audio on, please? Screen name Norma, can you turn your audio and video on? Hi, can you tell us your name, please? You seem to be unmuted, but we don't hear you. Um, so I think you asked a question. Your question was. Was the property on North Fifth Street discussed? Miss Juma, I'm Miss Juma, Miss Mahia.
Yes.
Did we discuss the property on North Fifth Street?
We did.
And what was our discussion?
Uh, it's gonna be heard on November thirteenth. And the applicant will renotice.
So screen name Norma. Um, you will be getting a new notification. That the property on North Fifth Street will be heard. Uh by this board on November thirteenth. You should, if you're within the two hundred foot area. Uh you should be getting another letter. Um, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to the board secretary, Miss Mahia. She can answer all questions. Isn't that true, Miss Mahia?
I can try.
Thank you. I hope that answers your question. And that concludes our agenda. Uh, uh, motion to adjourn is always in order.
Motion.
Non-debatable, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
When are we back, Miss Mahia?
Two weeks.
Uh, not next week?
No.
No, okay, I'll see everyone October ninth. Have a good evening.